Given in a second to start the recording. All right, here we go. Hey, everybody. Meredith here with Meredith Communications for the April 7th Builder Town Hall Meeting. This is what our fourth? I think that we've done. We've been meeting weekly ever since everything changed, at least temporarily, and just been trying to come up with new ideas and new ways to think and support each other and have a real community of people come together in the home building industry. So a couple of announcements and some details, and then we will jump right in with our guest, Brian today. First of all, I want to let you know what next week we're going to be covering. So since I had the opportunity to have Brian on today and just get really into his expertise on video and live streaming, it made sense that I pushed our photography content creation to next week. But next week, I'm going to have expert photographers on to help all of you in sales and marketing create your own photo content with your iPhones or your Androids and just get the best photos you can of your homes out there so you can post on social media and so forth. So that's definitely going to be next week. So that's a week from today, 4 o'clock Eastern. You can use the same link that you used today. You don't have to re-register, but tell your friends. Let's, let's try to break. I told my son earlier, Brady, I go, Brady, we had 722 registered today. And he goes, we need to get to 1,000. I was like, okay, clearly I've raised a competitive kid. So let's do that then, okay? So tell your friends, tell your family, they're welcome to join in. Number two, I want to give you a website traffic update on what I'm seeing out there for builder websites because there's a lot of good news. I'm going to share my screen real quick and show you a slide I threw together here. Take a look at this. This, every report I've looked at in the last two days, when I looked at week over week builder site traffic, what do we see? We see us climbing out of the pits of the last two weeks of March, where we really did kind of bottom out and climbing into April. This is a screenshot of 1, 2, 3, 4, 8 different reports, and these were just the ones I could fit on this slide. So week over week, I'm absolutely seeing increases in website traffic for builders. I'm seeing increases in live chat. So I'd be very curious, are you guys seeing that? Right into the chat box or the Q and A? We want to hear from you. I've got a couple of clients that have had a hot, over 100% increase in live chats. So that's great news. I do continue to hear that model home in-person traffic's pretty much dead. As you would expect, people are supposed to be staying home right now. But as long as they're still on our websites, we're okay. We're seeing increases in virtual tour and interactive content, increases in Facebook ad traffic. And most encouraging to me, as somebody who's really big on SEO, increases in Google organic traffic. Because hey, that's our highest user intent traffic. They are seeking you out. And when we see increases in Google organic and Google ad to a degree, that means people are looking for us, and that makes me happy. So we're looking good week over week. Okay, uh, yeah, sure, Janet, absolutely, you can do that. Um, okay, and a couple of points, people, things people are chatting in. Tara Eastwood, our traffic's looking good. Internet team's super busy, rock on. People are getting antsy, burnt out on Netflix. I'm actually getting a little of that myself. I looked at one builder website report today that was averaging 10 pages per visit and a five-minute visit length. And I haven't seen that since like pre-mobile phone, right? So huge increases. Okay, so let me introduce our guest today, Brian Fanzo, who is here to help us understand this world of virtual selling. He's a live streaming virtual guru. Brian, you've spoken in how many countries it says on your bio?
76.
76, that's 74 more than me. That's really good. That's really good. You guys might find it interesting that prior to being a speaker, he worked at the Department of Defense, where he managed a global team of collaboration in cybersecurity solutions. That's really cool, right? And now you're a technology evangelist. And you guys can check out his website, bryannfanzo.com to learn more about him. But trust me when I tell you that he knows what he's doing and he's here to help us. Brian, and I kind of live in two worlds. I live in like speaker world and I live in home building world. And I can just tell you, in speaker world, he's one of the most respected digital marketing technology folks out there, that keynotes and does amazing stuff. So we're glad to have you.
Glad to be here.
Yeah, so you know, you and I talked prior to this, obviously, and I was telling you that an entire industry of new home sales professionals have literally had to revolutionize how they sell overnight. They've had to go from mostly in-person communications in a model home or sales office to virtual, where they've either got to record videos or send video emails or live stream. And I thought, hey, we need Brian's help.
That sounds good. That's right up my.
Yeah, right, right? It's right up your alley. So when you think about creating messages and content that people will actually be interested in, that they'll pay attention to, what's one of the things that you like to keep in mind or you focus on and you coach people to do?
So you know, for me, you know, a lot of what I get really focused on is how do we shrink the distance online between us and our customers, us and our prospects? And so one of the things I think we all have to wrap our head around is I get to work and speak for a wide range of different industries, different organizations. And the one thing that I think that we all have to agree on is that we're all in the business of trust. How do you establish trust? How do you maintain trust? And then I think the hardest part of that is actually how do you scale trust? How do you get people to trust you long-term? How do you turn your customers, you know, into your advocates? And when we're thinking about digital or online, you know, for the last nine or 10 years or so, we've actually been using digital and online to distance ourselves from our customers. And if you think of it, you know, we were like, well, we don't want you to pick up the phone. We don't want to get your messages. We want you to go to our website. And then we were like, oh, too many contact forms. Like now we want you to go to our website, sign up for an email newsletter, or whatever it may be. And interestingly enough, over the last couple of years, one of the things that's kind of been apparent in the digital space is that what works offline, what has always worked in sales and marketing, is the same things that work in this digital space and has so much less to do about digital and so much more to do about how do you transition what you do really well into the online space and then leverage that to either, you know, you know, build new trust, you know, establish trust. You know, one of my principles, my dad was a candy salesman. And my dad, you know, as I was kind of growing my career in business, my dad was actually watching a live show that I was doing on Google Hangouts. I used to run a show there. I did 380 episodes on Google Hangouts over the years. And I was interviewing a gentleman named David Mierman Scott about this whole world of digital and social. And my dad had texted me and he'd said, hey, son, I'm watching what you're doing. And my dad had, you know, grown this global peanut business. They got bought by Mars Candy. And he said, you know, son, I love what you're doing in social media and digital, but just remember, nothing you do online will replace a handshake. And I remember reading that out loud. And as I read it, the digital community that I have was like, ooh, I can't believe you said that. And I kind of put it out there to say, not only is my dad right, but let's take this into a new frame. And the way that I like to frame it is that nothing we do in digital will replace a handshake. But if you embrace digital, social, video, it gives you the opportunity to have more handshakes. And then I like to say, turn those handshakes into hugs or really that strong connection. And so that's really, really, I think we have to start with it is, it's not really about, hey, this is my online persona, this is my offline persona. It's how do I connect the dots with what I'm doing really well? And so I think for a lot of people that are out there, one of the things I always say is start writing down all of the, what are the topics? What are the conversations? What are the stories that you tell when you have these offline conversations? And then ask yourself, are you telling them online? And even more importantly, are people able to look you in your digital eyeballs and believe you? Because the other thing about the digital online space that we have to remember is that you can fake it till you make it. You can sell unicorns, rainbows, and you can make lots of claims. We all know people in our industries that kind of have been living in the digital space where they're telling a story that's probably not true or your story might be better. But as we look at that, it's the, one of the big things I think it's important for us to realize is that, you know, the old ways of letting our work do the talking for us no longer work. And in this digital space, you have to be the one telling your story. You have to be the one putting yourself out there and building that trust. And I think that's where we take this to the next level. Unfortunately, we've kind of been forced into this space with the current environment. But I believe it's a, it's a great opportunity to not only hone a new craft, but as we emerge out of this and we're able to do more offline things, I think it's really exciting that you're going to actually see more mature leads. You're going to be able to filter the noise that you have offline by investing in not only video, but kind of that digital storytelling. So to me, this is, you know, an exciting space. I work with brands of all sizes and industries. I do a lot here in the, in the, not only real estate, but financial services as well as the contract side. And I'm always excited because there's so many great people doing great things. And all I have to get them to do is press the button. And then once they press the button, the rest is pretty magical.
Yeah, yeah. And so I hope what you guys just heard him say, he gave you a very conceptual way to think about doing this. But he also gave you a very tactical tip in there, which was thinking about the story that you have to tell and what are those message points? So strategy number one would be if you were standing in your model home and you were going to talk about the floor plans that you have in this particular community, the amenities, the schools, all the different aspects of the story that is that community, or if you're a custom builder, the story of your builder and what you all build and what you specialize in, you break that down into small chunks of story. And then that's where you get your content from if you wanted to do video messages. I had several people write me prior to this and say, please address what to do when I have a community where it's really a pile of dirt. There's not a lot to take pictures of yet. But I had this interest, red-hot interest list leading up right before everything came to a grinding halt. And I don't know what to do. And that's, here's what you would do is you would take what would be the story, what would be the conversations you would be having in person with these folks? And then you break those down into digital handshakes or hugs, right? And then get them on a little video and get them out to your interest list.
For sure. Yeah, and I think that's also one of those things, right? Where when you're asking yourself, like, how do you cut through? Like, the reason I'm such a fan of live video as well as video is that, you know, when you're thinking about building trust online, the process is, is, is long. I think we were very aware of how long that cycle is. But the shortest way we can make the cycle is when you let someone look you in the eyes and you can be honest and share, you know, what, what's going on. And I think one of the, one of the advantages of digital or virtual, especially from the standpoint of if you're working for a home builder or you're running the team, is telling the story that, that gets you excited to work with who you work with, right? I think that's, especially when you're thinking about purchases, long-term building trust, it's not really showing me a picture of what I'm going to live in. It's rather connecting the dots to your why, your excitement, and kind of visualizing that. And it's, it's an exciting thing to see, especially in the video space. And you can try lots of different, you know, styles in that, in that way of telling the story. But I do kind of think of this as, you shouldn't think that you're, hey, I don't know what I'm going to talk about. And if that's the space where you're at, I even tell people, you know, on your next sales call, just record it. Turn your recorder on on your phone and record it. And then write down like, oh, I don't, I didn't realize that I talked about how many school districts I've researched. I didn't, I didn't realize that I talked about, you know, the contractors I've been working with for five, seven years, right? Those kind of things, too often, they don't exist in video in our, on our digital, on our website, on our LinkedIn profile, or wherever it may be.
Yeah, that's right. So really, and this, this rule of coming up with what are the things you would normally talk about in person? This really works well for creating any kind of content, any content creation from social media posts to blog posts. I mean, the way that we create content at Meredith Communications is by writing out frequently asked questions. All I constantly write, all of the questions that you guys ask me on our monthly review calls or when I go and do sales training for you, whatever I'm doing, I'm always writing them down. I have a running list and I create content around those questions. That's it. Like, I wish it was more innovative than that. But I know I'm serving you if I'm creating content around those questions.
For sure.
Yeah, all right. So let's talk a little bit technical here for a second. If somebody's on the call and has not done a virtual visit or virtual appointment yet, or hasn't done a video yet, what would be a good, easy platform to them, for them to start with?
So I think, you know, it's like my mantra, my book that I'm writing is called Press the Damn Button. So the first concept is, you know, everyone, when you start on video, is horrible. The first 100 videos, when you do 1,000 videos, you look back are going to be embarrassing. And you kind of have to get over that. And so my two rules with video, to be great at video, are these two rules. The first one is perfection is a fairy tale. You're, you're never going to be perfect. And the more we try to be perfect, the more we add excuses and layers and crutches into why we're not doing video, right? Oh, I didn't get my hair done, the lighting is not right, I don't have the gear. And really, the gear is the phone that's in your pocket, right? And I think that's one of the things, I think, for a lot of people that's getting started. My second role is that control is an illusion. You can't control what someone says, you can't control the end components. But what you can control is your individual self and telling the story. And so for a lot of people, video, especially what, you know, what I would consider talking head video, talking into a camera, it's scary, it's awkward, it's weird. Like, we're not going to, you know, beat around that. And so the place I always tell people to start, interestingly enough, is, you know, this upcoming week, I want you, rather than picking up the phone, FaceTime four of your family members, right? Get used to looking at yourself in the camera. Like, one of the things you're going to realize is that, especially if it's your phone, that it's probably low and you're, you know, people are looking up your nose more than they should be, you know, instead of having it in front of you. And that's sort of like the idea of getting used to it. And I think I'm a big believer in the baby steps of video. And then once you're, once you're kind of prepared to create something that you might want to share out more, now is when you think about, okay, I want to press the button, I want to have some ideas. And really, it's less about where you're going to post it and more about finding your comfort zone. So this is why I always tell people, I think one of the mistakes we make with video is that we try to post video where we think our customers are. And in many cases, it can be intimidating because that might not be our preferred method, right? You might not be an Instagram person, but you believe the people you're trying to reach are on Instagram or LinkedIn or whatever it may be. My first rule is post where you're most comfortable and get the feedback from the people that are in your world that you're, hey, this is my area. So maybe it could be on your own Facebook personal account. Maybe it could be wherever you're individually, you know, comfortable. And as you get that little bit of momentum, now the second place you're going to post is where your, where your community is. I think one of the times we skip that step and because that new platform, that new idea is so different, it can be, you know, very intimidating. And, and I will tell you, as someone, you know, I've done a little over 3,500 live streams since 2014. I've launched them for Dell, IBM, Samsung. I did the Super Bowls, very first Facebook Live. And I can tell you, one of the things that I love is that there's an element of it's intimidating, it's overwhelming. And then there's a feeling for, once you get into this groove of, that's all I have to do, it's, it's that easy? And it's pretty interesting because we don't have to compare ourselves to what we see on TV. We're not, we're not broadcasters, we're not on-camera personalities. But we are someone that, you know, builds that trust. And I think that's an interesting trend we have now is there's a, there's the value of raw and real, right? And so I think that's a great place to start is, you know, don't be afraid to start doing, you know, FaceTimes and then slowly gradually move up. And the other piece of that is, don't be overwhelmed by all of the other variables, as in, how long should the video be? Where should it be? Like, these are things you're going to refine as you get going. If you add all of those pressures to you when you're starting off, it really does get intimidating. And you get mad, oh, I want to do a three-minute video and it's 3 minutes and 30 seconds. Let's, let's focus on getting used to putting out video and getting used to that part. Because one of the rules that I think we hear a lot is that, you know, the attention span of the digital consumer is eight seconds or people make a decision to watch a video in three seconds. Those are all things that you can, we can argue or discuss. But I think one of the things that you have to think about is, as you're getting started, as you're starting to put out their value, as long as you're doing it from a place of giving and a place of you sharing what you're talking about, if the right person is watching it, they'll watch it all the way through. And I think that's usually something that for a lot of people really gets intimidating. And I'm a big believer in, I don't need 3,000 views. I need three of the right people that are my prospects to be watching my video. And that's where our focus should be.
Yeah, no, I completely agree. I tell, I tell people all the time, when they ask for length, I go, look, they're going to watch as much of it as interests them. On average, people might watch about a minute, two minutes is an ideal length for social media. But if it goes on longer than that, that's okay. If the, if they keep watching, they keep watching. Just hit the important points that you want to convey, hit those upfront, hit those kind of early on so that you get the most important stuff out and then, you know, go from there. So I did a poll in our Facebook group. And if you haven't joined our Builder Town Hall Facebook group, please do so. We'll put a link in the comments so that you can just click the link and click join, and I'll approve you. And I did a poll in there this week. It looked like the top platform that everybody was using was Zoom to do these virtual appointments with customers that, you know, they can't do in-person right now. And then after that, FaceTime. I forgot what the third one was. There was one more, somebody check in, chatted in for me. But there was another one, but it looked like, and I, and I think that's pretty, pretty good advice. Like, if you're just starting, FaceTime and FaceTime some family members, Skype, somebody's written in Skype, go to meeting. Thank you, Angela, that's what it was. It was go to meeting. So yeah, you just need to start, right? Press the button and start, and you will learn as you go along, for sure.
And in the Zoom, like in the Zoom type environment, you know, this is one of the things, I actually just created a YouTube video on this just yesterday. One of the things we also have to realize is that in this current, you know, coronavirus, where we're at right now, the forgiveness and the openness to video collaboration is there. We're all kind of figuring it out together, even those of us that have been doing this for a while. And so one of the things you want to think about in this kind of environment is not only how are you memorable, but how can you foster that, that relationship that you're really good at offline? I think for a lot of people, I've been doing a lot of Zoom calls. I think I told you before I got on, this was my eighth one of the day. And for me, I, it's very interesting to study body language and eye contact and things that you might not be used to on a conference call or that you don't even have to think about. And these are very things that you have to be conscious about, but also be willing to forgive yourself, be willing to kind of try different things. I always try to get people to, you know, maybe position yourself differently. One time be standing, one time be sitting. Those kind of things will, it'll change up your energy, it'll change up the dynamic a lot of times in your Zoom call. And you'll, you'll kind of find out what works for you. I'm, I'm at my standing desk right now in my office. And for me, that's a big difference between me sitting in my chair and me standing. It's just a different dynamic. But there are some times where I want someone to feel like, hey, just come in, like laid-back conversation where I will sit in the chair. And so little things like that, you have to kind of test and tweak as you go. But it is, we are in, like, the, the very best time you can press the button is right now because everyone is kind of learning together. And it's kind of a, it's a beautiful thing to see.
So I've been doing Zoom meetings for years with clients on their monthly website review call. And early on, I did not realize there was a setting for turn video off. Like, so, so that, so that the meeting doesn't just start with your camera on, right? Right, so everybody, there is a setting where you click video off when meeting starts. And then you have to purposely turn it on if you want it on. Well, I didn't know that. So I had been to the gym in between Zoom meetings and I was sweaty and gross and ball cap and had just ran back in, started this meeting. The camera was on, is this builder out in Utah, right? Him and his team. And they're like, hey, we can see you. And they were like, have you just been to the gym? And I was like, oh, and so here, Brian, I swear to God, this is what I did. My reflex kicked in and I went like this. Whoa. I tried to hide under my desk. I tried to hide, and then they go like this, they go, we can still see you. And then I like picked up a pen. I was like, oh, drop my pen. And then I just carry on. And so, yeah, and then not too long ago, I had a sales agent was doing a Zoom with me and didn't know her camera was on and was, was in bed. She, she was in bed, yeah. So really.
I'm not opposed to putting a piece of tape over your web camera, not for security reasons, but just because then you know for sure, even if your camera's on, it's a black screen.
Yeah, so, and then, you know, so definitely check your settings. Make sure that camera is off unless you click it on. Yeah, okay, um, let's talk about audio. And because I think people will forgive the video, the look of it, because they know we're amateurs, they know we're not Steven Spielberg. But if we can't hear you clearly, then it's not going to work. So let's do, yeah, so let's do Zoom and then just recording video. And it might be the same answer, but since people are doing a lot of both, what do we need to do on a technical side to make sure we have good audio?
So I think, you know, one of the things with audio, and, and, you know, if you're not going to use a, a kind of a professional microphone, it is the, you know, you want to make sure that you either have headphones on or the speaker and the microphone are, you know, not connected. So if you're using your desktop speaker and your desktop or, you know, laptop microphone, you're going to have to have headphones on, right? There, there's the feedback and the connection there are a little bit too much. Now, I'm, I'm using what is called a Blue Yeti microphone that I have right here. Yep, we both have the same one. Like, I have a professional podcasting one as well. But for me, like, you know, finding kind of like that, that mix is rather important. But I don't feel like you have to have it, right? Something as simple as, you know, AirPods, you know, I do a lot of my calls. I even record, yeah, I record a lot of my, I can actually tell you, the, the IBM video that's on the IBM website right now that I created, I created with an AirPod in my ear and holding my phone in my hand, which is very interesting that's on the IBM website. And, and it was because there was some wind and I knew where I was kind of moving. And I put the headphone in the, the ear opposite of where the wind was coming in. And so it picked up my microphone, it picked up my audio, but didn't pick up any of the wind and it worked out really well. And the other piece of that, you know, it is, audio is definitely the more important component. But if you have the opportunity, I know Amazon right now is sold out, but an external webcam, they don't run that much money. But the difference with an external webcam can be really transformative when it comes to, and I, and I'll, and I'll even show it just from a standpoint of, this is my webcam from my, so this is my webcam that is on my laptop, right? Like, you can see the difference between that. And then I just have a, you know, a Logitech camera that is there, right? Like, the, just the difference in, you know, clarity and, you know, there's a lot of things in that side. And it also helps, you know, kind of making it eye level, trying not to have, you know, lights behind you is definitely something you want to think about. But, you know, I think the, one of the biggest pieces is, you know, if you have the headphones, do that. And then in the Zoom space, there's nothing more important than finding the mute button. So if you're in a. For those that don't know, if you have Zoom as the, the main interface, you can actually use the spacebar to mute yourself. And you can actually hold down the spacebar when you're talking. And then when you let go, it puts you back on mute. So there's some shortcuts that are out there on Zoom to make it a little bit more user-friendly for yourself. You know, I, I get into habit, it takes a while, but I got in the habit of muting myself every time I'm not talking if there's more than three people on the call. And that little, it feels kind of annoying for a little while, but it, it'll save you, you know, the time the dogs are barking or something's happening that's unexpected. Yes, that, that's going to happen, you kind of have to roll with that. But at the same time, it's one of those things that, you know, it allows us to kind of not, you know, try to avoid some of those things that, you know, might make our, our video not as professional or just disrupt the flow.
Yeah, yep. So I will post in the Facebook group, Amazon links. And neither Brian and I are affiliates or commissioned. We should be, but we are not. So these are just products that we use, that we like. So I'll post a link to the Logitech camera. I did the same thing he did. I changed mine from my iMac to my Logitech. You could see, hopefully you guys were looking, you could see it was a big difference. And my Blue Yeti mic's awesome, the ring light that I have, Um, and, uh, my Blue Yeti mic's awesome. The ring light that I have, it's got the soft white youthful light going. It's just amazing. Um, 19 all over again. Um, so there's several products that you can use that will, but the, the key is, everybody listen, if you're doing Zoom, you've got to have, what he's telling you is a separate mic and head ear speaker. If you're trying to use your computer speaker and your computer mic that's built in, it'll have that echoey feedback loop that will make everything, everyone think they're losing their mind, right? So that's important. Uh, what about if we're shooting video, Brian, with our, our phones, um, at our model home? If we're not, if we don't have shelter in place or we're essential and we're allowed to be at our model homes for a mic for that? Do you just say the AirPods for that or what do you?
The AirPods work great. Um, interestingly enough, if it's not super windy or super noisy, the, if you're using an iPhone, and I do have an Android as well, but the, the iPhone now, the, the newest like three, last three models. So I think the iPhone eight and four, iPhone seven and forward, uh, that when you're, you're doing a selfie video, it actually uses the back microphone for noise cancelling, the front one for taking your audio. If you're using the back camera, it's actually gonna use the microphone on both the front and the back. I know a lot of people when they're, they're recording off the back of the camera, they'll sometimes want to talk louder or talk, you like, and the nice thing is it does actually use both, um, both microphones there. Now, there are lots of other options in that space of, of gear. And actually funny enough, I, I am an Amazon, I do have an Amazon influencer, uh, store page. So I can, I can share that. I get like 20 cents a link, but I don't really care about that. I've organized the gear into different, um, you know, work from home, mobile kit. And so I can share that. But one of the things that I often, you know, people ask me about is actually, I really am a big believer in a tripod. Both a tripod for holding it and a tripod just for, you know, keeping it steady. And it's a $15 investment, right? Of all of these investments, you know, having that $15 investment that allows you to put your phone, you know, in the, in the holder, you can walk with it, therefore your hand isn't over the microphone. Cause sometimes we have a tendency to do that. And then all you record it, you're like, it just sounds muffled. And so being able to kind of hold it away from you a little bit. Now this isn't a selfie stick, so you don't have to feel, you know, embarrassed in that side of the house. But, you know, it is a little bit in, in that side of like, the, the more that you can get comfortable, you know, the more that you can keep it steady, the more that you can, you know, not try to move around. Uh, but you'd be amazed. I recorded, uh, 24 hours total over five days of video at the Super Bowl in 2016. And I did all of it via my, my iPhone. Every single one of those hours were on my iPhone. So, uh, you know, for those kinds of clients. So sometimes we'll think like, oh, it's a mobile one. Um, you know, I have a DSLR, um, camera here that I can use as my webcam. And I prefer my, my Logitech, uh, you know, uh, nine 22, which is an amazing tool. And so I'm a big believer in, you know, kind of making those two things, you know, kind of thinking about those two things, uh, differently. But, um, yeah, I'll, I'll put the link that I have up from my, um, from my Amazon store page. And you don't have to buy anything on there. It's just more of, I've organized it to work from home, video on the streets, podcasting, audio equipment. So I try to break it down on there and it's beginner, intermediate, advanced. I, you know, I, interestingly enough, for a lot of people, when they work with me, I get, I mean, I get boxes of gear sent to me on a regular basis. Uh, and I'm very lucky for that. But, uh, I'm much more in the what works the best and what's the simplest solution. So, you know, I have multiple different, um, you know, uh, attachments. I have a Rode attachment that is a Boom microphone that can attach to your iPhone. Um, I have a Lavalier one that works as well. Um, but you'd be amazed, you know, the AirPods, as I said, my video that it's, it's up on the IBM landing page right now was done with an iPhone and my AirPods, which is, uh, you know, is probably
So for most of you, I really would encourage you to add a mic to your phone. I think the audio just really has to be good and we have to hear you. And it's also that trust building and confidence when the audio is strong and you're coming across nice and clearly. I think there's something to that. So, uh, I'll put more links up. He's got links. Yeah.
So these are two different ones. So this is one, uh, with like a dead cat on it. Uh, you can be in the windiest of windy places. Um, these are both by Rode. Um, they're very nice. You know, they attach right on the top of whatever mount that you have. And you can, you know, it does, it does make a pretty big difference. The other thing, especially if you're gonna do, uh, maybe a side by side video where you're with somebody else, it's important to have the video back a little further, which then the audio is gonna be a little bit stronger. And I can tell you, you know, like especially this Boom one here, um, this microphone, I mean, it, it'll pick you up 20 feet straight back, um, if you're, you know, if you have it set up. Definitely, definitely worth that side. And, and I also, you know, I'm a big believer in kind of testing what works in the, in certain environments, right? But I, I do think it's one of those things that you get used to it and, and kind of figure out what works best for you.
But I don't want everyone to feel like you have to buy thousands of dollars of equipment. Um, literally if you heard, you know, your smartphone and your heads, your headset. Whether it's the wired, wired ones with the white cord that goes into the phone or the AirPods, as long as it's got a microphone on it, it's gonna be fine. Now, if you want to do some more advanced stuff, I love giving out advanced tips for people that are further along in this, but, um, okay, we've got a couple of questions that have popped up. Um, please address video file size. So yeah, so one of the negatives to recording something super long is video gets bigger and bigger and it's harder to move it around. So what are, what are some tips or things they can do if they, you know, need to email this to someone or what, get it to somebody?
So, you know, I think it's one of those things about knowing, knowing where you, this is always a, a pet peeve of mine. Before you ever press the damn button, you have to know where the video is gonna go. What's the, where is it, where is this video gonna live? And for a majority of social media platforms, let's just, other than YouTube, uh, they aren't gonna accept anything higher than 720, um, even though our, some phones can record in 4K, can record in 1080. And so we have a tendency, we're like, oh, I want it to be at the highest setting. Well, that's of course gonna be the largest file size. So be okay with, you know, hey, you can set it up on the 720 setting. That's so perfectly fine. Uh, I use Airdrop. If you're a Macintosh and a, uh, iPhone user, you know, airdropping your, your files directly off of your phone. Um, and then, you know, also kind of remember there's, you know, the, the idea of when you're, you know, some of the things that you have on your phone, more often than not, in your iPhone settings, you can also set it up and saying, what is using the most storage on my phone? You'd probably be amazed that some of the apps you've never used are taking up more of the space. You can remove those apps and give yourself back a little bit more space there. But then also think about it too from, you know, I, I know some of you will be using BombBomb or, um, email, uh, video platforms. What they do really well is that because their browser created, they're built for the optimal file size. So yes, you can record one on your phone and upload it, but it's there, it's one of those things that if, if you're gonna use it for email, using one of those email solutions does make your life a little bit easier when it comes to that.
Yeah, for sure. Uh, we've had somebody else ask about the use of a green screen background to enhance the background. Talk to us about that.
You can definitely do that here. We can, we will, um, here we'll put, see, that's a stage behind me, um, in, in, you know, and you can do, you know, there's definitely, now I don't have a green screen here, but because of the way my lighting is set up, it does kind of allow me a little bit of that freedom to use that background. Now, I will say, the, the green screen, it's one of those things that, you know, having a green screen and setting up a virtual, uh, background can definitely be of advantage. It can help you kind of, you know, feel a bit more confident. But I will say, in a lot of the Zoom environments, a lot of the environments where you want to be personal and real, there is kind of an advantage of allowing people kind of to see, now I'm not saying you're gonna leave dirty dishes, but understanding kind of like that balance of what, you know, you know, where you're working. So there are some great, green screens are not that expensive, but I will tell you, one of the things, I own three different ones. The hardest thing is if it's not stay set up for permanently and you want to keep moving it. If it's not ironed, if it's not straight, if it's not pulled tight, you'll get static, you'll get the moving, like you even saw on the one that I was doing. And so a lot of times I, I try to steer people away from green screen unless it's a produced video where you're setting up a, a, a shot and have kind of a, a production setup. Because even the lighting, understanding, you know, top lighting and, and box lighting with a green screen is, uh, is a little bit, you know, more difficult for, for many. And I think, you know, it's definitely one of those things that where, you know, if you have a scenario, it's, uh, it's not a bad investment, but, um, for me, uh, even for the lot of the executives that I coach, uh, they, they are interested in a green screen, but then realize the value of kind of having an atmosphere around them.
Yeah. I, I've got a couple of different ones that I've bought as well. I have found it just to be, take more time, to be more cumbersome. Uh, part of this, I feel like is being able to produce these quickly and efficiently. So I have a basic setup. This is it. You're looking at it. I can turn my ring light on and turn my stuff on and get something cranked out. Obviously if you're using Zoom, you can pick different backgrounds if you wanted to, uh, change it up a little bit. But I don't know, uh, for what we're doing and what we're gonna be using it for, I think keeping things really simple and efficient for yourself is the way to go, right? You don't have to overdo it. Um, okay. So, uh, question, do we shoot the video? If we're just gonna shoot a little video message and we want to send somebody, do we shoot it horizontally? Do we shoot it vertically? What, what's the story with that?
So yeah, so, um, you know, the traditionalists will always tell you to use it horizontally. But you want to think, as I said before, you want to think about where the person is consuming it, right? We don't walk on the street on our phone, holding our phone sideways, or we don't sit on the bus, holding our, you know, or we're not sitting, you know, watching TV. More often than not, we're holding it straight up and down. And so depending on the platform and depending on where you want to, um, you know, put the video, um, will kind of dictate that. Now I will tell you, for, if you're, once you get comfortable, you can shoot it horizontal with the idea of staying center frame. And then if you want to post it on a platform like Instagram, you can actually crop it to be vertical because you stayed yourself in the, in the center of the video. But I think it's, you know, it really just depends, you know, I do, um, I, I actually was coaching this morning on a, a music producer that's doing a, a Facebook video. And he's doing all of his, you know, um, vertical because he really wanted that like extra landscape, be able to show, you know, and as, as builders, there might be advantage for showing more width, or it'd actually be like, oh, there's a lot of things going on around here. Maybe there's, you know, construction all over here. It might be an advantage of, of doing it, uh, vertical there for that as well.
Okay. So take a look at what's around us and then think about what platform. I can tell you, if you're gonna be sending it to your website people, uh, that are managing your site, hello, moi, uh, please shoot it, you know, horizontal, like, cause every, on websites, everything is wider than taller. It's, we, we need it that way. But if you're doing it social media, you're looking more probably horizontal, right? Is that fair to say, Brian?
For sure.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, we've got a question on free video editing or just super simple, if we do need to edit videos, what, uh, would be good for that?
There are a, a whole bunch of different apps, if you're thinking phone or if you're thinking desktop. Um, if you have a Macintosh, um, it, I don't like, if you have a Mac, I keep saying Macintosh as if
I know, right? That's so 1988, Brian.
It is. If you have a Mac, um, you actually, the software actually comes on, um, your machine for you for video editing, which is actually kind of nice. Um, there's definitely, you know, you have, and you even have quick time for doing that. Um, and then, you know, in the mobile space, like the Canva actually even allows you to edit video through Canva. Um, I have a personal favorite phone app. Now it's a, um, it's a monthly charge. It's like $3 a month. It's called Video Shop App. Let me grab, and, and what is really nice about it is I actually edit all of my videos in this, in this app. It's called Video Shop App. And what is nice is it allows you to take a video and you can edit it directly on your phone. But what's really nice is you can see I shot this one vertical, but if I wanted to make it for a horizontal post, I can say, okay, pick a YouTube setting and it automatically crops it for me right in there. If I want to, you know, add filtering, and so this is all in your phone. It's called Video Shop App.
Nice.
One guy developer, I found it randomly. Um, here's the, if those are on Apple, that's the, but it's Video Shop App.
Yeah. Cause I'll be, I'm, I'm a very techie person. I do all this stuff, right? And I will tell you, the one thing that I've always struggled with though, was video editing. Like that is, that does not come naturally to me. iMovie makes me want to lose my mind. And I'm a Mac person. Like, like I said, I'm pretty skilled at most tech, but, um, so my experience has also been when I used, um, an app, a video editing app on my phone, for some reason, that was a lot easier for me.
It is. And I, and that's probably the reason I use that one. Like I will record a video on my desktop and oftentimes send it to my phone for that editing. Now, and, you know, and I think that's also something to think about when you're thinking about video editing. You know, really the things that you're worrying about is audio or things where you're cutting out massive gaps. There, there isn't a need to really find, because we're not trying to be perfect. And there's also, once you start that process of cutting and moving, it can take hours. Like I'm, I'm a timer based person, so I will set a timer and say, hey, you have this long to edit this video. And the timer goes off, I wrap it up because I will lose 50 minutes for a video that's not worth eight minutes of my time editing. And so I think it's important to kind of have a balance with that. Um, you know, and like I said, like that, there, there's some other apps, um, that if you want to add like some standard B-roll or things out, there's one called Wave Video, wave dot video is the browser. Um, it's actually really nice. It has some settings where it'll do it for you. You'll just upload it, hit it, it'll, it'll kind of like, oh, this was the end of your video. You stopped talking four seconds at the end. It'll trim it for you. It'll also, you know, add a title slide if you want. But, you know, to that point, it can get a little bit overwhelming. I'm a fan of doing it on my phone. I mean, I do edit on Final Cut or Camtasia or Adobe, but at the same time, I mean, the last four videos that I've posted myself were all edited on that Video Shop App. And so, you know, kind of figuring out that nice balance.
Yeah. Cause we don't want you guys getting down a rabbit hole too far on this stuff, right? Uh, I also, a lot of times when I'm making my little video messages, honestly, I try to get it in a take where the, the messaging itself doesn't need editing. We're basically, what I've said is good. The only thing I might want to do is chop off a little bit of the beginning where I'm like looking down and pressing the button and the end when I'm pressing something like that. Like I edit beginning and like soup, keep it simple, stupid, kiss it.
If you have a, if you have a new iPhone now, your iPhone actual regular photo app allows you to trim and add a filter to videos. It didn't do that until a year ago.
Done.
Now it does that all in your, your, your
I love that.
So that, that kind of allows that to do that as well.
I've gotten a lot of questions of people writing in about, you know, their current customers that are under contract now that they've either started building for or haven't quite started building for, when all the madness began uh, with the virus hit, like they're getting cancellations. So salespeople, this is where you could create a, a quick little video message one a week to your folks under contract and get it out to them, just saying hello, uh, something fun, some, you know, we care about you. And if you need somebody to talk to, if you're bored, call me, I'll chat with you. Like, cause we're all bored. Like I find myself having long conversations with the randomest people and I'm on my walks in the morning in the neighborhood because I'm just, I need somebody to talk to. Um, okay. I have a couple of tips for you, Brian. I'm gonna give you a second to put any like stuff into chat, any extra links or tips that you've got. Um, I came up with this little acronym today, Sales People Live. So before you go live, when you are gonna send somebody a video message or you're gonna do a, a live Zoom with someone, here's what I want you to think. Number one, L is for location. Uh, if you're gonna record a video message, I want you to start out your video with your location. Where are you? Like I need context. I need to know where you are. I've watched some of your stuff on Facebook and I've noticed like, I don't know what house you're in. You start in the kitchen. So I need you to start out kind of out front. If you're gonna walk through a house, tell me the community you're in, tell me the home you're in, like give me a location. Okay? I is for interesting. I want you to think of one interesting factoid that somebody would not know about this house, about this community, about you by reading websites, social media, whatever. Like give me something interesting. That's what you're gonna talk to me about in the messaging. V is for the view or slash the visual. You know, Brian said it. He's like, maybe there's stuff around you. We don't need to be showing the dumpster. We don't need to show the pile of lumber and trash. And like, what is the view like before you press the button? What it, what's the visual? And then E is for energize me. So I want you to give me, it takes more energy on camera. That's why somebody like me does well because I like Red Bull all the time. So you gotta amp it up. If you're a little bit more of a laid back personality, it's gonna feel like a lot, but it takes more energy. And then I want you to give me energy in terms of call to action. Ask me to do something. Ask me to call you. Ask me to chat you. Ask me to text you. Keep the conversation going. You know, in a game of tennis, we have to hit the ball over the net to have somebody have a volley. They have to hit it back. So hit the ball over the net with a question or a call to action so that people will talk back to you. So that's live. Location, set the context. Think of something interesting to tell me. Check out, make sure your view and your visual is good. And E, give me some energy and excitement. Okay?
On that same note, like too, when you're thinking about it, like, if you're struggling because you're talking to a camera, don't be afraid to have someone, your spouse, your kids stand behind it just for eye contact. I, I've found it really valuable to have someone to look at beyond. Um, the other piece of, you know, I think one of the things that we forget, and I'm a big sticky note person, is to draw, to draw a smiley face on a sticky note and put it on your camera, right? To, to remind yourself to smile. I think a lot of times we, we're, we're thinking about all the things in our head, where we're gonna walk, if we're moving, and all of a sudden we're forgetting to, you know, to show the personality or smile. So that's definitely something to, to think about as well. And I actually, I do that with, um, with live video especially. Is I make everybody, uh, put the sticky note over the bottom right-hand corner of your live video, if you're live from your phone, so that you don't see how many people are coming and going. And the reason that is, is we have a tendency naturally to get more excited as the numbers go up. go up, and then as soon as the numbers start going down, we start questioning, and we lose a lot of that energy. And so if you put the sticky note over, then you give the same amount of energy, no matter how many people are in the room, and that kind of helps you with that, you know, that energy and kind of, you know, kind of keeping that upbeat mentality.
Yeah, all right. I'm going to bring our panelists on, so we can open up for open Q and A, true town hall style. While I do that, Brian, will you give them a couple of tips on running a Zoom meeting?
Sure.
I know we've got sales leaders and, and builder owners on that might be running team meetings, and there's definitely some do's and don'ts if you're going to run a live Zoom meeting. So I'm going to let you run with that while I get Carrie and Matt on here.
Yeah, so one of the things you want to think about when you're doing the Zoom is that, you know, there's lots of options. The settings in Zoom can get fairly overwhelming, and we have a tendency to turn them all on, or all off in that case. And I'm a big believer in understanding like the baseline, and then turning things on as you go, right? And I think that's something to think about too. So, you know, allowing people to be in the weight room, but you're the first one on video, right? Or, you know, kind of allowing that dynamic. And one of the other things too is, you know, a lot of times, one of the things we forget, especially in the virtual space, in the video meeting, is that it's about educating each other as well. So one of the things that you want to do is that, hey, everyone, we're going to get started, I know we're all on here, when you're not talking, if you go ahead and mute yourself, right? A lot of times, if you don't say it, it's something that we're not thinking about. And another piece of it is, because we're all on screen, and depending on your look, if you have it on speaker view, or, or the group view, it can be very overwhelming if you ask a question without directing, directing it to somebody. And so one of the things that you're going to want to do is say the person's name when you're asking a question in the Zoom space, because we've all done it. Ask the question, there's dead air, and then eventually, all of a sudden, three people talk at the same time. And I think that's usually like, oh, so if you're the, the, the meeting person running the meeting, try to direct the question to one person, and even say, hey, I'm going to ask the question first to Meredith, and then whoever wants to jump in afterwards, feel free to jump in. Therefore, it starts with somebody, and it allows people to kind of join the conversation. So those are things, I always say, it's educating the audience, because we're all learning this together, and then kind of managing expectations for both yourself and those that you're bringing on.
Yeah, so a couple of things that I always do when I run a Zoom meeting like this is, one, I reboot my computer and my router before I start. It kind of wipes your computer clean, wipes your internet clean of everything that's been running on it all day, that hamster wheel, you know, that's dragging it down. I close all of the programs on my computer that are trying to live sync, like Dropbox or iCloud, Time Machine Backup, if you're a Mac person. What else do I do? I disconnect all my externals, except my webcam and my microphone, so my three backup drives and all that other stuff, I take, I disconnect all of it. And then I keep all the programs closed, so my email is not running right now, my, everything's closed, so I'm just trying to give this computer its very best shot at running and holding this meeting effectively, and not having a big crash.
Yeah, you can, too, your phone takes a lot of bandwidth, so just taking your phone off of the Wi-Fi will actually save you a lot in any.
I didn't know that one. Okay, take your phone off Wi-Fi, done.
You know, just, you can swipe down and just remove, like, actually, mine's off, so look at that. I'm actually practicing what I preached there. But, you know, that, that's important, you know, even your iPad, like, I mean, the, the devices, although they might be, you know, if you have notifications on, on any device, they're currently using your Wi-Fi signal, and your Wi-Fi router will prioritize a mobile device always first, because they assume it's the thing you're using the most. And so just simply turning off the Wi-Fi on your phone might really help with the bandwidth. Another thing on that is, if the bandwidth is a concern, in your video settings, you can actually turn off HD. We would much rather have a non-HD video that's not pausing and hiccuping than a HD video that we can't hear every other word. And so that, you know, those kind of things as well, I think those are all, you know, really good tips.
Yeah, so we now have on our Brady Bunch screen, Matt Riley, Vice President, Group Two Advertising, provides marketing services for builders all over the country. And we have Carrie Mulcrone of Carrie and Co., who provides sales training, coaching, culture coaching for builders everywhere. So this is now our town hall portion. We are right at the hour mark, but we do generally stay on another good 15, 20 minutes until you guys exhaust all your questions. I mean, we're still at 270 participants, so we've held you pretty good, even though we're at an hour. So, give us your questions. One, one that Brooke wrote in, while you guys are writing in new questions for our panel here, we'll address this one. "For people using live chat, have you found it's better to start with a chatbot before a live takeover? We want to ensure we are talking to truly interested leads. We aren't sure if this is a good solution, or perhaps not putting the chat function on the homepage instead of having it, having it further into the pages." Matt, you want to take that one on live chat?
Yeah, absolutely. So I, I think that what the, the purpose of, from a live chat and bots are, the purpose of the bot is to alleviate some of the overwhelming lead response, or chat response, that you would have in a normal day-to-day, right? I don't think they're in normal day-to-day at the moment. So unless you're seeing this massive influx of leads, or people that are trying to chat you, that would prevent you from being able to get to somebody else, I would turn all of that off and engage with someone one-to-one right now. I would say that there are zero tire kickers. People who aren't interested in a home are definitely not shopping home builder websites. And I think that we want to engage them on a personal level right now more than ever. If you can dial up your customer service, that is one of the things to do it, and pause the chatbot. Now, if it's between the hours of, you know, you're in bed and the time you wake up, and you want to turn that chatbot on to snag somebody that's perusing at 2:00 AM, that's okay. But during business hours and during times that you're available, I, I wouldn't have that turned on right now unless I had a huge influx of leads and I really needed to help sift through those. So if you've got that problem right now, awesome. If not, then pause it for a minute.
Brian, you want to, anything on live chat you want to throw in?
So I think, you know, there's also the element of like, getting people to watch a live video, or when you're going live. And I, I can tell you, the number one way to get people to know about a live video is email. Like, let's face it, if it's not on our calendar, I don't care how many push notifications on Facebook or Instagram. And so for a lot of the clients that we use, if you're going to go live on your page every Friday, and I always say, try to be consistent with the time. You know, rather than even doing a chatbot, I know for one of the shows that I run, we do a, a Facebook Messenger chatbot that will actually pop up five minutes before you go live. That annoys me. Like, I get annoyed seeing that chat pop up. So like, we just recently removed it, but if you're trying to, you know, attract people into a live broadcast, it's amazing that, you know, email still is that number one piece. Don't be afraid to give someone, you know, the email, you know, the link for a calendar invite, or like what Meredith did in the group, right? That, that reminder and kind of like that dripping out, you know, anyone that's promoting something over seven days, right now, we don't know what's going on tomorrow. So right now, it'd be like, there's no need to promote that far out. But even for things that I'm doing for my, my paid clients, I try to promote no further than 36 hours out, especially if it's a live, like this type of, you know, environment.
Yeah. Carrie, we had somebody that contacted me before the event today, wanting to address, how do we reassure and try not to lose and protect our backlog? Like, the people that we have under contract, that haven't started yet, who are freaking out, some of you are probably getting some cancellations, like, what are you coaching sales teams right now to do to protect that?
Wow, good, really good one. So all of my people that are on this, just, they'll go, yeah, 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 we heard this, because it's like the question of the week, right?
Right.
The, the biggest thing is that, is the message appropriate? And is it helpful? So as I've been telling people this week, we've all got buckets of people right now. And in our buckets of people are, everybody that you have in your CRM from all of 2019. They made a decision to probably do something in 2020, so they're a bucket of people. Then you have the people that came out of the closet in 2019, and now you've seen them or heard them, and they're a bucket of people. Then you have the people that you've been in appointment status with, they've not yet done anything, but what do you say to them? Then they're under contract, but they haven't started building. They're your nervous Nellies, the like, I'm out, give me back my paperwork. And then you have the bucket of people that they are building, and they are just worried about today to closing, right? So my biggest suggestion is that it needs to be sensitive, thoughtful, and appropriate. And if your message is that, it will resonate with them, and it will automatically soothe them and calm them. Because the people that are going ape on you right now, like Chicken Little, the sky is falling, they really just want someone to say, it'll be okay. It will be okay. So, everybody's point, and Brian's, find your soothing voice. The right voice for the right bucket of people.
Yeah, yeah, Matt, go ahead.
Just to add on to what Carrie, what you were just saying, and to, to reiterate, every communication that you have with one of your prospects, whether they're currently under contract in backlog, whether they're prospects that you're trying to get to contract, right now, things are uncertain. And so every single interaction that you have with a customer, a prospect, a homeowner, either adds certainty to your company, or, and you, or takes away certainty. There is no middle ground there. You're either adding certainty or removing certainty. So just make sure that the interaction that you're having is always adding that certainty to the, to each of the buckets of your people.
And yeah, and I, sorry, Carrie, go ahead.
Just really quickly, to Matt's exact point, and it comes from a lot of things that Brian talked about, if it's in video, is that you're either, you're right, you're, you're adding to it, or you're taking it away. But I think that what you want to have them have a very clear understanding, if we're just going to talk about today's event, that it's, it's different. They want you to explain, why is this different than 2008? Because they've just gone, wah! So when you understand that in 2008, builders, construction, and lenders played a role in that, this is a virus, and we are working on the virus, we are working on the vaccination, it is something that is going to get better. So to the point is, they don't want to cancel, they don't need to cancel, they shouldn't cancel, they shouldn't not buy, because today is the best time, because it's not the time of yesteryear.
I'll post in our Facebook group, Realtor.com, I subscribe to their email, all their different email content, and they put a really good article about, out about, is it a good time to buy a home? And the, the way, the tone that they use, the way that they made the argument that it is a good time, it was reasonable, it was rational, but it wasn't overly Pollyanna, to the point that you go, you're just trying to sell me something. Which goes back, Brian, to what you were saying at the beginning of the building trust. So I want, I'll put the link up, I want you guys to read that, and read their rationale. So like Carrie's telling you, you need to have a good rationale of why it is still okay. And she's right, 2008, we were part of the problem of why 2008 happened, the industry, the credit industry, all of it. That is not true this time. That is not true at all. This article makes that point, Brian.
Yeah, so one of the things, also, we talked a little bit about tone, and like sharing, like, you know, your, you know, upbeat, the, the words we use is extremely important right now, and we should use a lot more we's, and a lot more, a lot less you's. And so when you're writing or doing a video, don't say, you have this problem, say, we are going through this, we, and you'd be amazed, I, we have a whole thing that we do where it's talking with your audience, not talking at your audience. And in this moment, no one wants to be told what to do, or even feel any more alone than we already do. But if you're willing to say, hey, this is what we are doing, even in a video, showing a little bit more of your, hey, hey, this is me working from my home, you know, my, my desk and my kids', things are across from me, not only does that relate with that, that connection, but it makes them feel like, oh, well, I'm not alone, and they know me better. I think in this time, we've always heard, people buy from people they like. I will make the argument, people today and moving forward will buy from people that can relate to them. And your ability to relate to the things that we're going through is extremely valuable. I'm working with Freddie Mac right now, on doing an entire virtual event, all on the concept of them switching the narrative from saying, this is what everyone else is going through, to this is what we, you know, as a, you know, a financial institute are going through. And it's, those words are extremely important to kind of make people feel more like, hey, you're on the same page.
Yeah. Brian, one of the things you were sharing with me as we were preparing for this was an event where you had 300 title agents in the audience.
Old Republic Title, in Scottsdale, Arizona.
Yeah, you had 300 of them in the audience, and I'm bringing up this story for you to tell in a second, because we had somebody write in on the Q and A, it's, they said, I've been, and it's anonymous, says, I, I've been using group voice video apps, Skype, Zoom for a long time, so it's easy to forget that not everybody has used it before. What are important things to remember when working with people who maybe aren't as used to using these types of things? And it just made me think about you, working with that group, kind of getting them all to like, get their phone, you were showing me, like, you know.
Lots of FaceTime, lots of walking around, you know, and, and getting that kind of, that ball rolling. We also, you know, worked on things like your intro, right? Like, if you're doing a video, you know, oftentimes we get overwhelmed by all the things. Maybe just do, you know, every day, create a video just for yourself of your introduction. Like, for me, it's like, and, and you're going to have different tones, like, what's up, my name is Brian Fanzo, digital futurist keynote speaker, and I'm excited to be here in Virginia, talking to you, and then I discuss it, right? And having that intro practiced removes one less thing off of your plate that you're thinking about. And that was one of the things that we really worked hard on, that we spent a week, every, every day, someone had to post into our, our Facebook group, their intro, and they would fine tune it and tweak it, and, and kind of change the way that they wanted to do that. And then the other piece of that, you know, with the Old Republic Title that I thought was really interesting, is I was working with all the titling agents, and one of the things that I heard when I got in there was, Brian, my clients aren't on these networks, my clients don't want video. And then they would say, Brian, this isn't, you know, my job isn't sexy, or what I'm doing isn't sexy. And my answer to that is, it's not about, you know, sharing a sexy part of your job, but it's a rather, trying to bring people in. And so my number one word, when it comes to remembering what you, how you want people to feel, is they want access to you. They want access to people, places, the experience. The word access, I, I, I will write it on whiteboards as big as I can when I work with video workshops. Think about, how can I give someone access? And that access, it connects to that trust, that relatability, and it'll get you over that, over that piece. And I had a couple of titling agents go 5X, one of them went 15X in that quarter, simply starting to use video, both replying on, you know, video email, and then they were doing a, and I thought this was great, if you are extremely location-based, one of the things you can think about from a standpoint of video content is, not how can I talk about my community, but how can I hyperly highlight something, someone, or some business in my community that's doing great things? And so one of the clients was in Tucson, Arizona, and her community, where her community was that she was a titling agent for, she would just talk about her, her favorite restaurant for a hamburger, her, the favorite, you know, place that she went to get her nails done. And she did these videos on Friday, and she called it, I can't remember the name outside of Tucson, but it was like Highlight Week. And she was amazed the amount of people that were not only sharing it, but her current customer, people that already bought from, you know, used her as a titling agent, would say, hey, I told you she's the best titling agent in, that I've ever used, and look at her, she's helping us discover new restaurants. And so thinking about little things like that, like, what, our messaging right now doesn't have to be about us. Like, I think one of the most beautiful things that we can do is give access to ourselves while shining the light on others. And if you can switch that narrative, give people access to you, and shine the light on other people, no one's going to say you're helping too much, or you care too much. We sure as hell will say, you are selling too much, or you're marketing too much, especially in these current times.
Yeah, and that was really the whole concept behind the town hall, really. The, why, why I did it, why I invited other experts to be part of it. I mean, it was that. And I'll tell you, it was about three years ago, I incorporated a more personal story tell you, it was about three years ago, I incorporated a more personal story in one of my keynotes, and a sales manager for a builder came up afterwards and was like, that's like, the best you've ever been. And it's not that you were bad before, it was just, I liked that, I liked that Meredith. It was an embarrassing story of something I had done really stupid.
It's the relatability.
Kind of like hiding under the desk with the webcam, right? And so, he was like, we want more of that. And so, I went down that road of rewriting a lot, because I always thought people wanted all my knowledge and content, hard content, hard content, tactic, tactic, tactic. Started doing more of that access that you're talking about. And while it scared the living, ever living out of me, and it was horrifying and hard at first, I think I've gotten a lot better at it, and I've gotten used to it. And I think you're right, that that is what they want. Now, what we have to think about is what our builder owners, our sales leaders, what they are, that's exactly what they're scared of, though, is, all these people putting out stuff that doesn't properly reflect the brand, that doesn't, you know, isn't professional, that isn't right. And so, Matt, Carrie, you guys weigh in, and then Brian, I know you've got some thoughts too on that, because I know there's a lot of leaders on this call that are listening to all this going, I do not want to let all my people loose with iPhones, like, I'm scared of that. So how do we handle that?
You know, a couple real quick things, and Matt, you can tag on to this stuff too. I want to go back to the webinar, to the Zoom that we did a couple weeks ago, because it's exactly what Brian's talking about, is, tell them what you're gonna tell them, and then tell them, and then tell them what you told them. And I seriously believe, because I have like, had that be my mantra this week. It's like, so today, and here I am, and then, and then so, in case you missed it, this is what I told you. So that, just like when I was like, are we clear, that if you come home later than 10 o'clock tonight, it's gonna be a problem? You know, you just go back to your parenting stage. But I do think that that has a lot of value to making it easy for all these guys. And then press the button, click, send, click, live. We've got-
Yeah. Matt, what do you, Matt, what are your thoughts on, for leaders and builder owners that are like scared to death? I mean, we have builders that don't even allow their people to individually post to social media.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, I was one of those. Like, I was like locked down, I was not gonna let my, one of my 25 salespeople spread out over multiple cities, start going, okay, let me just give you the company page login, and you can just go all willy-nilly. Wasn't gonna happen. But there are ways now that you can, that you can still remain, you can still have some control. A really good one is, you can have someone in the field pre-record a video, send it to the office, and then do a Facebook premiere video, right? So you're talking about live video. It broadcasts and does all the alerts, just like it's live, but it says premiere versus live. And then that lets you have the ability to chime in and answer questions and chat people up, because now you're not on camera the whole time. There's some software that's out there, you know, like, something like BeLive, B.live is a great tool. You can, you know, they actually have an app on the iPhone, on Android, I'm assuming, where you can actually, you can set up, or you give your salespeople guest links, and then you can host the event as the, you know, as the manager, or some, the marketing person at the main office. And then you can bring people in as you want them in, and control, and do an interview, and control that flow, right? So there's several different ways that you can still get your message out there, but still somewhat keep the control of it, and the message of it, to make sure it's delivered on brand, and still bring everybody in to make them feel like they're still contributing in a meaningful way.
Yeah. Brian, what, I know you've got some ideas too. You're muted. Yeah, hold on, I don't know how that happened. There you go, sorry.
I hit mute because it's a habit. And then it was like, let me unmute. I think, great points. You know, I've, I work for the Department of Defense in cybersecurity, so I understand privacy, regulated industry. I work a lot of healthcare brands. And I think one of the things you have to think about, and I agree, Matt, there's lots of ways that we can bring people along. BeLive's a great one. There's another one called StreamYard, very similar to BeLive, which is all web-based. But I always say, like, one of the things you have to think about too, is, how do I create swim lanes, not rules, that people understand they have a little bit of freedom, but these are the things that are off limits, these are the things that we encourage. And I always try to set it up as swim lanes, right? These are some ideas. The other piece is, you know, we oftentimes are scared because we're, we are, we have, we're unknown what someone's gonna say. And I think, one of the things we have to think about is, how do we help our team members be better at telling our story? Like, we would all love to believe they can all tell our story really well. But from an executive piece of it, how do I help enable that, right? How can I, I help people really break down? And just because it's on the about page of your website, does not mean that anyone remembers it, or knows your preferred way of doing things. And then I also think there's, just because something's live, doesn't mean it can't have a strategy or a plan. We went live at a secure facility in Maryland, Virginia, or Maryland, Maryland, Virginia, in Maryland. And we spent an entire day walking these halls, removing pictures off the wall that might not be appropriate to be shared publicly. And we did a Facebook Live on the US Army Facebook page, where we walked the halls at this, hey, we want to give you guys, we want to bring you guys with us. And, I mean, it was one of the most successful Facebook Lives at the time that had ever been done on any brand page. And it was because people were like, hey, I only know your brand as, like, if I know somebody that works for you, they don't, can't tell me what they do because it's classified. And they're like, we can't believe you're using live video. And they assumed as if it was just sporadic, right? And live doesn't mean sporadic. And I can tell you, we had every footprint tracked down, we had intros, outros, we even had a plan to delete the video if certain things were said, or, you know, there were certain, you know, if someone all of a sudden walked out of a secured room. And so I think that, it's that, you know, swim lanes, it's that piece. And the other thing that I would, I will always make the argument for, is as a leader, one of the things you have to kind of start reexamining is the risk versus reward. And I think for a lot of times, we're like, I don't know if I want to give people, I don't know if I want to give my employee access to this account. Now, the risks are there, but in this world we're in right now, where people aren't trusting as much a brand or a logo, but we're trusting people, there is something to be said about the reward of that human connection being there. And I like how Matt brought in BeLive, where you as the executive or the leader can help direct the questions and the conversation, you can help make sure that it stays in the vehicle that you want. But I think for a lot of times, especially for industries that I work with, when we go back and ask questions, like, why don't you share this? Or, why don't you tell this story? Well, we never have. Well, five years ago, I would have never said, I was diagnosed ADHD at 31 years old. Now it's something I share on stages and screens around the world, because guess what? It's part of who I am. I know for people that are watching, like, oh, that makes a lot of sense, like, his ADHD is all over. But for me, that's, it's important for us to reexamine the reasons we're not talking about some things, and re-asking the question, is it more valuable today for us to really break down what this family-run business is about? Or what this, you know, the sacrifices that our employees are making so that we can continue to provide the product that you want? And so, I'm a big believer in, in kind of those swim lanes, and I love the idea of kind of bringing people along on the journey.
And I would just to add on to that, like, four seconds is, if in today's environment, if I had to choose one or the other, one meaning complete control, or another one being speed of getting it out there, I'd choose speed.
Every day.
Love it.
Yeah, yeah. Some basic swim lanes, sales leaders. Number one, we still need you to be professionally dressed. You don't, you know, you're selling several hundred thousand dollar product. So I know we're all at home, and we're more casual, but if you're gonna do live video to customers, then, you know, model home dress is definitely appropriate. Two, just, again, look at what's around you. You know, your bra air drying on the chair behind you is not a good look for the video. Like, you need to hide that sucker, okay? Like, put the stuff away, look around, make sure nothing controversial, no political signs, you know, nothing crazy is in the view, that's important to the brand. And then, obvious things, like, the rules that would apply when you're working with someone in person in a model, in terms of profanity, in terms of politically correct, or politically charged language, or just all those basic things that you know, again, what you do offline works online, those are your swim lanes, right?
I would add on there, one of the most powerful phrases on live video, across the board, is your ability to say, I don't know, let me follow up with you. Because if we think about it, we don't want someone to be perfect. And the reason we're getting on a live, is because we have access to you. You know, I call it participatory content, because the viewer gets to participate in the content being created. And so, you're gonna get questions, and that oftentimes overwhelms both executives and, you know, those of us on camera. Being able to say, I don't know, and I will follow up on you, actually adds validity to what you do know. Because we don't believe that you're perfect. And it is pretty amazing for me, and I've done this with brands of all sizes, all industries, by simply doing that, and then following up, remember, you know, this is your, this is your word and your, you know, mission. But then following up and saying, hey, I took care of our research, or, I got the email address for someone on our team, let's connect you and make that happen. You would be amazed, the I-don't-knows will end up strengthening the relationship with that one, rather than you making up an answer, or dancing, like, so scared of that question, that you almost avoided, to where, then you're losing credibility across the board. And so I think, it's one of those things that doesn't seem to make sense, but in the live video space, being willing to say, I don't know, frees you up from feeling like you have to answer everything, or you have to put on a facade that you, you know, really don't have. And it also gives the leadership freedom to say, hey, I'm not gonna answer something that was wrong, you know? And we've seen mistakes. I took over Applebee's.com, if you guys are familiar with the restaurant Applebee's, and I did 14 hours straight live streaming on their website. We sent 25 influencers to 25 Applebee's restaurants, to live streaming their dinner experience. And funny enough, we actually had TGI Fridays, someone come in and comment from the TGI Fridays handle in our live stream. They didn't know they were logged into it, right? Like, that piece of it. And then we had a bunch of questions about things that were in the cooking process. And we avoided them, we said, hey, we don't know that, you know, we'll get back to you. And interestingly enough, they changed two of the things in their, in their overall arching Applebee's delivery, based on the questions they got. And so, that's another thing to kind of remember in the live space. If you get questions during a live video, I can almost guarantee you, more people have that same question. That's a perfect place to create a produced video for, and answer that same question that was asked on a live video.
Yeah. All right. So, I'm gonna do a couple housekeeping things. While I do that, each one of you, main takeaway or aha from today, I'll give you a second to think about that while I do this. So, next week, same time, same station, same Zoom link you used this week, we'll have professional photographers on. I've got somebody that specializes in really, kind of like, photographing people. So like, if you're wanting to do selfies, or you're wanting to take pictures of your homeowners, or people under contract, whatever, he's gonna help you look really, really good with your iPhone DIY. And then I've got some housing expert photographers who take pictures of our beautiful homes, and they're gonna give you tips on how to do that as an amateur. So that's next week. And then, if you haven't joined Facebook group, please do that, the link is in the chat. That's where this recording will be. That's where you get the recording. So, you gotta be in the Facebook group. We encourage you to join there. You are welcome to ask questions and post things. Right now, I have it down where all the posts are moderated, because I'm so sensitive, I don't want any selling going on in this group. But your questions are still welcome. I want you guys to do it. I just want to make sure that nobody's trying to sell you anything. So, please engage, please post, we want to hear from you. Okay, quickly, Carrie, main takeaway or aha today?
So, what I just want to say to everybody is, the fact that it's not the one thing that you're gonna do one time, it's all, it's the little things that you're gonna do all the time. It's consistency. Don't go, put all this time into this one little video, and then don't send another one. I think it's the consistency with which you message people, that builds the trust, that helps them feel the love.
Oh, perfect. Matt, what do you got?
I'm gonna steal a quote from the president of Kohler. Kohler said, they've been through the Great Depression, two world wars, the Great Recession. Each time that they've come out from a really difficult situation, they've come out as a stronger company than they have before. The quote that I'm stealing is, don't waste the crisis. So, don't waste what we have in front of us, and there's a huge opportunity to come out on the other side, doing things that you've never done before, and getting significantly better, and repositioning yourself and your company to be in an unbelievable position on the other end. So, don't waste the crisis.
Love it. Nice. All right, Brian, what do you got?
Well, I think for, you know, for a lot, we feel as though we're doing something to bridge the gap till we get back to the normal. I don't believe we're going back to normal. I believe we are going to create a new normal. And part of that is, we get the ability to shape what this new normal is, as individuals, as business owners, as those of us that are putting it out there. And on top of that, the things that you're doing digitally and virtual now, will not only save you time, but can transfer into leads across for years to come. And so, don't think about the things that we're, you know, kind of thinking about here as short-term Band-Aids, more of the idea of, hey, I'm adding another skillset, I'm upskilling, I'm also streamlining. You'd be amazed, the opportunities to filter your leads based on live video or video conversations, where all of a sudden, you're giving less tours, but tours to more mature leads. It's amazingly valuable, even when we get back to the future. And then, last but not least, is that relatability. You know, I challenge every business, every brand, you know, ask yourself, how is my brand being relatable today? And it can't be just on your about page, it can't be just one video. It's about that connection, because right now, we are, you know, we're living in this time, in this crisis, we will come out of it. And the people we will remember, people that, that we want to help move this forward and create this new normal, are those that we can relate to, those that we know can feel our pain, and that can help us kind of create this new future. So, that's the challenge. And then, last but not least, of course, press the damn button.
Yeah, right? Yeah, I know. All right. So, thank you, Carrie, thank you, Matt, again for chiming in, we appreciate you. And a big, huge thanks to Brian. I Facebook messaged him, we know each other, but we don't know each other that well, we're getting to know each other better, right? And I look forward to that, but he doesn't even know me that well. And I just Facebook messaged him and said, hey, our tribe needs you, and they need you for free, would you help me? And he said, you bet I would. And now he's done seven Zooms today, and did it amazing. So, we really appreciate you, big thanks and big love to you, appreciate you contributing your expertise here for everybody. So, okay, I'm gonna press the damn button, and in the meeting, we'll process the recording and get it up in the Facebook group, just as soon as we can. Thanks, guys, I'll see you next week. Bye. Thank you, thank you, Brian, thank you, Carrie, thank you, Matt.
Bye.
Bye.